Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I would like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting on January 24th, 2024. The city council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Community members are welcome to join either in person, remote via Zoom, or by calling in. For those who wish to participate in the future via Zoom, you'll find the instructions to register for the public comment on the City of Everett website under the City Council Departments. Please note that we do not allow comments of any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We do have or accept comments focused on personal -- or, I'm sorry, we do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. I was just so excited to say, I'd like to hear what you guys have to say when you come and speak here, so I really wanted to get that in there. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin.
Here.
Councilmembers Arlingo.
Oh, excused, he is at Snohomish County tomorrow, which is a registered meeting. We're trying to get the date changed, so hopefully he'll make the next one.
Councilmember Fosse.
Present.
Councilmember Vogel.
Here.
Councilmember Bader.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Tuie.
Here.
President Schwab.
Here. I would like to ask Councilmember Ryan to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely, please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to read the land acknowledgement.
Yes. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahoech people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people's stories and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. So the minutes for January 17th have been sent out. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of the minutes from January 17th, 2024.
Second, the motion.
Okay, I hear a motion and a second for minutes for January 17th, 2024. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Fosse.
Stain.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Tuie.
Yes.
President Schwab.
And yes. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, President Schwab and council. Good evening, everybody. I missed you last week. I was in Washington, DC for the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the Mayor's Innovation Project, and mayors and CEOs for U.S. Housing Investments, and had a number of meetings with our officials out there on housing homelessness and the drug crisis. Got to lead a panel on the drug crisis and a mayor's innovation showcase on the drug crisis. Not that we had any, like, exciting thing that we are leading, but just to try to highlight the gravity of this crisis. And I think we're sadly ahead of the curve when it comes to the cities across the country, so it was a good discussions that I had with my fellow mayors. Also got to meet with the Department of Transportation and Congressman Larson to advocate for our Everett Point Industrial Bridge project, hopefully get some funding for us, and got to meet with President Biden and together with about 50 fellow mayors at the White House. So really good, packed four days, but worthwhile to be there and advocate on behalf of our city. I have one appointment for you this evening. I'm asking for your concurrence on an appointment to our planning commission for Nathan Shelby to position five for his five-year -- for a term expiring on 12/31/2029. He's been involved in a number of our boards and commissions, and in fact, I think was one of the first commissioners I got to meet when I was on the council on the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, so hoping you will join me in recommending him to the planning commission.
Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Bader, so moves the appointment of Nathan Shelby to the planning commission.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Okay, here none. Clerk, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Tuie.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes.
So congratulations, Nathan, and thank you for your service at yet another board and commission. And next, I'd like to invite Chief DeMarco Ford. We have a number of firefighters to swear in. It's exciting to see this large of a recruitment class. I know we have been short in our department, and you've been very active in recruiting, so glad to see such a good group of new firefighters.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, there are 11 new firefighters with us. There's a 12th that had a family emergency and wasn't able to attend tonight. The 11 before you are at the finish line of five months of fire training academy and post-academy Everett-specific training programs, and next week, they will join their colleagues out on the streets of Everett as probationary firefighters and serve the next seven months working through a fairly extensive workbook of probationary tasks. When I say your name, the camera person will like you to come and stand right next to the podium, so that's where I'd like you to switch to. So first up tonight is Zachary Avance. Zach currently lives here in Everett with his wife and son. He's from Fort Worth, Texas, where he was a firefighter paramedic for 11 years before moving to Washington. He has a Bachelor of Science in Emergency Health Services from the University of Texas and enjoys traveling, going on hikes, and hanging out with his wife and son. Zach, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Next is Eric Bonia. Eric is also from Texas. He's from Dallas and currently lives in Lake Stevens with his spouse and 12-year-old dog. He has six years of experience as a career firefighter in Texas and 11 years as a paramedic. Eric enjoys all things outdoors, including camping, hiking, mountain biking, scuba diving, and mountaineering. Eric, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Next is Zachary Cleve, and yes, he's old enough to be a firefighter. Zachary is from Mount Vernon, Washington, and obtained his fire science degree from Skagit Valley College. He's worked as a seasonal wildland firefighter and as a firefighter in Skagit County Fire Districts Three, District 13, the Burlington Fire Department, and Snohomish County Fire District 22. In his spare time, he enjoys weightlifting, doing hiking with his duck club, and waterfowl hunting. Zachary, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Next is David Gebert. David grew up in Everett, graduated from Everett High School, and currently lives in Eastlake. David played soccer at the University of Washington and graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Construction Management. He has experience in construction as a laborer, framer, and project engineer. He's a recent graduate from the Everett Community College Fire Academy also, and his main hobbies are skiing, climbing, fly fishing, anything that gets him outdoors with his friends and family. David, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Next is Heather Graham. Heather is originally from Central Point, Oregon, and moved to Arlington during her freshman year of high school. She currently lives in Mount Vernon with her boyfriend and dog. She spent 15 years in healthcare with the last five as an ER tech at the Providence and Swedish hospitals. For the last year and a half, she's also been volunteering part-time as a firefighter in Sky Valley at Gold Bar. Heather has a Bachelor of Science with a major in integrated human biology. A few of Heather's hobbies include going to concerts, live music, rock climbing, baking, CrossFit, and reupholstering furniture. Heather, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Next is Sheerston Gunn. Sheerston grew up in Marysville, currently lives by Lake Goodwin with her cat. She graduated from Marysville Pilcheck High School, went through the fire science program at Everett Community College. She's worked part-time at Savannah Fire District 19 for a year and a half, and before that, managed a loft coffee bar here in Everett for five years. She enjoys cooking, baking, gardening, as well as spending time with her friends and family. Sheerston, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Missing tonight is Blaine Halverson for a family emergency. I'm sorry I'm not able to introduce him tonight. Next is Warren Hellman. Warren is originally from Olympia and currently lives in Plain, Washington, with his wife and their small family of pets, an American Eskimo dog, and two cats. Warren has volunteered at Lake Wenatchee Fire and Rescue for the last year and a half. He has a Bachelor of Science in Biology from Western Washington University and a Master of Science in Entomology from State University of New York College of Environmental Science and Forestry. Warren's hobbies include rock climbing, mountain biking, skiing, and pack rafting. Warren, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Next is Matthew Myers. Matthew is originally from Nashville, Tennessee, and currently lives in Marysville with his girlfriend and dog. He was a licensed massage therapist for several years prior to pursuing a career in the fire service. He has earned his EMT certification from North Seattle Community College and then started volunteering with Riverside Fire and Rescue in Puyallup. He was then hired by South Mason Fire and Rescue before he came to the Everett Fire Department. Matt has completed three years of college coursework towards a bachelor's degree in psychology. In his free time, he enjoys hiking, playing video games, weightlifting, watching movies, and spending time with his friends and family. Matthew, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Next is John Paul Ramirez. John Paul Ramirez grew up just outside of Chicago and currently resides in Kirkland with his wife and two cats. JP graduated from Seattle Pacific University with a degree in language arts and a teaching endorsement for K through eight. He spent many years in health and fitness industry as a personal trainer before joining the Everett Fire Department. An avid triathlete and rower, JP enjoys spending his free time training four and racing in 5 and 10K races, half marathons, duathlons, obstacle course races, and any other unique race-style competitions. JP, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Next is Anthony Vasquez. Anthony's from Wapato, a small town in Yakima County, where he was fortunate to have grandparents living on the same property. AJ now lives in Shoreline with his girlfriend. In high school, AJ took part in fire cadet program through the Yakima Fire Department. He then pursued a degree in psychology at WSU and worked in behavioral health for many years. AJ enjoys team sports such as soccer, hanging out with his friends in the outdoors, or practicing piano or guitar. Anthony, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. And last but not least, Zachary Watson. Zachary lives in Lake Stevens with his wife and daughter. He's originally from Maple Valley. Zach went to college at Central Washington University, where he also became a resident firefighter with Kitata Valley Fire and Rescue. He's been a firefighter with Savannah Fire District 19 and is an experienced groundskeeper. Zach grew up playing sports and now plays men's fast pitch and snowboards when he's not spending time with his brand-new daughter. Zachary, welcome to the Everett Fire Department. Wanted to take a moment to thank the mayor and council for letting us have some foresight in hiring. These 12 are about to go on the street. There are 17 more that started on Monday. They have the five months in front of them. They'll be -- hopefully, all 17 will be successful and will be here healthy and in front of you in about five months. We really appreciate the opportunity to make advances on getting enough firefighters on the streets, so thank you very much.
further comments this evening. Thank you, President Schwab.
Thank you, that was quite an honor. Hi, Angie, do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Good evening, President Schwab. We do, just in chambers, so those in chambers, there is a timing system at the podium that you can monitor, and when you see the yellow light flash, that will indicate that you have 30 seconds left and we'll ask you to wrap up your comments. So we'll first start with Jara, followed by Beverly. If you could please come to the podium. And please press the button on the right of the base of the mic. Yep, and then state your full name and city of residence. You can move the mic down if you'd like.
Is that better? Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, I'm Jara Collinge. I'm in Everett and part of the Boulevard Bluffs neighborhood, and I'm here to bring attention to the water pressure issue from last year. February 3rd of 2023, like others last week spoke about it. Just to give you the story, my three minutes, on February 3rd, I was out of town when my hot water tank exploded and emptied out all over the basement. My dog sitter, house sitter, was there, and she found the damage about 3:00 PM. Approximately started about 1:00, noon, 1 o'clock, from some other neighbors. I was lucky enough to have a neighbor that would come and help locate the drain in the basement, pull up carpeting, padding, move furniture, help the water move its way out, and she spent the next few days helping to dry things out. When I returned home a few days later, I began removing damaged items and deep cleaning. I had to have my water tank replaced and found a company, you know, within a couple of days that were available, but one of the places I wanted to call was Stall Rack or Work, and they are a local -- they're on 806 Fifth Street in Muckel Two. And coincidentally, he said, oh, you have many people are calling to get hot water tanks. We know what happened, you know, call the city. We're trying to help everybody out as much as we can, but we don't have enough right now, so, you know, we had to find somebody else. I had to trash and dispose of many items, get many estimates for cleaning up the mess, making sure the area was dried. Drywall was wet, fans were needed to help clean up the area. I talked to too many people at the city, followed the directions on who to call, who to question, who do I, you know, talk to to settle this, and it was a lot of runaround. And everybody said, you know, it's not my fault, it's not my department, you know, call this person, try this person, and I did it all. I finally was told to file a claim with my insurance, and of course, I was not going to do that because this wasn't my fault, and the homeowner's insurance, of course, is just going to raise the rates next year or they're going to drop me from the water damage. I, uh, let's see. I also called Haas Brothers Construction. That is one of the names that several people told me about, that it was their project that had this happen. From the front desk lady at Haas Brothers gave me the number of the project manager, and of course, I called and left him a message, tried to get him to call me back, but the CFO, Russell Proctor, called me back and said, we don't provide your water, we are not responsible, call the city, and dropped me like that and said, if you're going to call again, only ask for me, you can only talk to me. I went over to look at the Soundwork construction site to see what was happening, and the City of Everett pulled up a truck, just my luck, and I talked to two gentlemen, and I said, hey, just looking things over, do you know anything about this? They're like, oh, yeah, it happened to a lot of people in your neighborhood, call the city. I've kept many notes and records since February.
We'll need you to wrap up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I filled out my tort form, I've talked to Chris Schultz, she called me today. I'm kind of getting the same information. Something is being -- something is going on, the lawyers are talking on both sides, and as soon as they have some agreement, they'll let me know, but I feel like there has to be more action than that. That's been a phone call, and it's been going on since February. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Beverly, if you could please come to the podium and state your full name and city of residence for the record.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Franklin and city council members. My name is Beverly Luth, and I have lived in Everett for the past 36 years. My husband, Brian, was born and raised in Everett and had a practice here for many years as well. I'm here today to express our concern and frustration at the city's lack of coordination and progress in dealing with the aftermath of the February 3rd water pressure calamity involving the city and Haas Construction. Everything that Jara Collinge has just said, many of us in the Boulevard have experienced this as well. Our Boulevard Bluff residents experienced significant damages and loss of use of hot water tanks and other plumbing due to this incident. Our personal household has had serious damage to both our hot water heaters and also a pressure-assisted Indian wall toilet system. If you don't know what that is, I'd be happy to explain that later because it's kind of complicated. We have submitted tort claims almost a year ago with no definite resolution in sight. During this entire process, we have been redirected to multiple people to resolve the issue, just to name a few. Tim Markham, Water Quality Control Operator, who left a message for me stating the water pressure rose to over 200 PSI on February 3rd, 2023. In our area, I was told that at the, um, the water pressure coming in from outside is usually 108 to 110 PSI, so that's pretty significant. He then directed me to Grant Moen, who is Maintenance of Superintendent, Public Work and Director, Matt Wellborn, Public Works Finance and Information Services, and finally, among several others that I talked to, Chris Schultz, Risk Management Legal Department, who directed me to file the tort claims. My concern in mentioning these people is that the city didn't seem to have one contact person to work for us, to help navigate this system. I think it'd be really helpful if at least that one contact person could then direct us. It certainly took an extraordinary investment in personal time, perseverance, to find a way forward throughout all this. We sincerely hope that the city council could assist us in moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea, if you could come to the podium, please? And state your full name and city of residence.
My name is Chelsea Gray, and I live in Everett, Washington, in the Port Gardner neighborhood. Just going to find my page here. I have lived within two miles of this -- oh, whenever you guys are ready to start.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm Chelsea. I've lived here for nine years within two miles of this chamber, and I currently reside at 2507 Wetmore. I'm here, for the fourth time, to talk about inequity in policing, specifically inequity in the way laws are enforced or not, and cases are investigated or not, based on outdated and frankly archaic sexism-based prejudice policy and practice regarding women held and executed by EPD. Overtly prejudiced practice and policy and a general, forgive me, bitches be crazy mentality that color every interaction these officers have with women, and especially when those women are victims of violence in our community here to report those crimes. Instead of investigating cases based on their merit and the facts of the evidence presented by the victims, they are barred from investigation and the rightful assignment of detectives to review that evidence and gather additional facts based solely off whether lieutenants, and in my case Lieutenant Pontain, believe them at face value, having reviewed none of their evidence or the facts of their case, or whether those lieutenants find it easier to assert reporting victims are crazy and having no evidence to that claim, but nonetheless banning further investigation into their reports. I would ask that Lieutenant Pontain be removed of his control over my case for this reason. This is indeed what I experienced here at EPD since the felony stalking plus, as I've come to call them, attacks toward me first began on October 13th of '23, and since I have experienced the following. First, it was diversion to multiple out-of-jurisdiction agencies and to social services not equipped to help because I need a, uh, an investigation by law enforcement officers. Accusations, things like, are you sure you didn't deserve it? Aren't making more of it than it is? Aren't making it up entirely? And then avoidance, pretty self-explanatory. And the fourth is worse, because it is more than just quips and implications that I, a woman, and that is passionate about advocating for herself and the small but beautiful business in life I enjoyed here prior to these attacks must be crazy, but the true weaponization of mental health services by police and toward victims who advocate just a little too fiercely for themselves and make of ourselves a thorn in the side of an EPD that outright refuses to duly investigate violence against women in Everett. Use of the 51-50 hold by police in order to punish female victims reporting violence and following up on those reports when EPD fails to is wildly unethical. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. And that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. All right, moving on to council comments. Council, oh, we have more?
Just, can you wait just a moment? To our public commenters, I think the city attorney wanted to make a comment based on your guys' comments, so.
Oh, sure. On the water pressurization issue, I know that's been very frustrating for the residents of the Boulevard Bluffs neighborhood. Situations like this where the damage is caused by a party other than the city are very difficult. We are negotiating with Haas Construction, which is the party that caused the damage, and we are very close to a settlement with them that will result in a cost-sharing arrangement. Even though we don't believe the city has liability here, we recognize the need to get money to the damaged parties. Our lawyers are very close to a settlement agreement that will come to the council that will result in our ability to pay these claims with, hopefully, a 50-50 cost-sharing arrangement with Haas Brothers. It's been difficult to communicate with residents because we typically don't talk a lot about matters that are in potential litigation posture, but just be assured that this is something that we are very focused on, and we do hope to have a resolution of this issue very soon, and we are aware that people have been very frustrated, and I think in the future, maybe we can revise our processes a bit so that we get information out to neighbors a little more quickly, even in situations where we don't believe that we have liability, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, good call, before they ran out. All right, now we're to council comments. Councilmember Fosse.
I'll be quick this evening. I just want to say a big congratulation and thank you to all of our new firefighters. That's pretty exciting to see that kind of volume, so thank you, everybody, for your hard work and bringing on these new folks, and I think that from the service, it's also really neat to see and hear about how many of them have pets.
Or rock climbing.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogel.
Good evening. Also, congratulations to all the new recruits, and of course, to chief, because you need them all. I was at the Alliance for Housing Affordability meeting this evening, just before council, and much discussion, actually really vibrant discussion, and I'm really excited about that, about ADU code updates and comp plan, and I'm very excited that so many different jurisdictions are getting together to really meld and figure out some stuff and see what other cities are doing. I am the chair again this year, so that is also exciting for me. And we are also trying to figure out exactly when we're going to meet next. We have it tentatively, because it used to be that it was just before Snohomish County tomorrow, so that in real life, it could go from one building to the next building just on time, plus our council met during the day on the Fourth Wednesday, so there's a lot of zhuzhing, there you go, happening at this time. One point of interest I wanted to bring forward is that Snohomish County has had the lowest home sells, home sales this year, well, 2023, besides in 2009. So in the past 24 years, we're on a roll for the lowest amount of homes sold, any kind of home, not just single-family, but when you're purchasing. And the cost that a family or a purchaser, whether it's one or two or multiple, needs to make last, in 2021, it was $113,000 a year, and now it's up to $163,000. So even with interest rates going down, that doesn't mean that the ability to purchase a home is getting better. Just the opposite. So there's that, and I just wanted to make sure that we were getting some kind of update on the weights this evening, and I would also like to see about an update on how many people so far we think might be getting an implementation of the enhanced sentencing. I know it's not even February yet, but
No one yet.
But I know that how many people are, could be possibilities. And I think that is all, yes. And I just, I want to say to Chelsea that I see you. And perchance, we might have a discussion after this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bader.
Thanks. No comments, no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Wednesday. This week, I attended the Pinehurst Beverly Park Neighborhood Association meeting, and they've been, they have new leadership, and it's been bringing quite a few new people to the group. So it's been very exciting. They meet at the Boys and Girls Club by Lyons Park, and yeah, just doing a fantastic job activating the neighborhood again. Thanks to Chief, Chief for being at the meeting as well, Chief Druze, not Chief DeMarco, and some other folks from, and Deputy Chief Hendrickson, and some other folks from EPD to just talk to the neighbors about their public safety concerns and help alleviate any concerns that, that the EPD isn't focused on the needs of the community and the work that needs to be done to keep them safe. So I really appreciate just the compassionate approach to making the neighbors feel heard and responded to and safe. So thank you very much for that. Other than that, no other comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tuey.
Yeah, just a quick congratulations to Chief DeMarco and a great group of, of new firefighters. Great to see that. And I, I did appreciate Bev Luth's comments about having a single person that, that could connect with people that have some issues pertaining with the city. So I don't know if, if administration can kind of look at something like that, but I think that makes, would make a lot of sense. So anyway, that's all I have tonight.
And thank you. Do I have administrative updates?
Yes, I have a couple, I have a couple of things. So first, I had a council member ask about the status of our traffic and school zone and red light camera implementation. So we're on track for, you know, it was a little delayed as we kind of did due diligence, but we're still on track for the new timeline. So that's for Horizon Elementary in early March, the signs will go up. About 30 days later, there will be some more testing, the system will get activated. There will be signage that say enforcement begins in April. And then hopefully, that will mean that folks start going slower because then they'll start getting tickets in May. So for, for that last month of school, give or take, those will be in place. And then the red light photo enforcement will roll out over the summer. Yeah. And we've, we've done some outreach to neighborhood, council of neighborhoods, neighborhood meetings, some other stakeholders, Connect, you know, road. Got a good landing page on the website, and then we'll do some more media outreach once the signs pop up and it's a little more present in people's minds. Someone, I made a note, so someone asked me about Claire's place, and I just wanted to note that in the January council digest, there's a letter about kind of the current status from, it's from the Catholic Community Services. So got more questions, let me know, but that is in there. Application of, I'll get the name right, the Multi-Use Facility Fiscal Advisory Committee, the stadium committee. Thank you. Yeah. I don't know the, I don't know what the, I can't put the letters in order, but that's what it stands for. We have applications, and you guys will be getting them at least by Friday. It might be earlier, but I don't, it's not part of my role, so I don't want to make promises for others, but I, we're in the process of getting those ready and getting those out to you. I think that's it. I'm going to let David lead on an update on the Waits, and then I can fill in as needed. And then I have your, both of the comments that I heard that were for follow-up. So I've got an email, too, from you, Councilmember Vogely, about sentence enhancement. And then thank you, Councilmember Tuey, for mentioning the kind of claims process and that, that sort of role, what that looks like. So David, go right ahead.
And on the sentence enhancement, I think you got an email from Lacy Offit with kind of an interim response, and we'll continue to collect information on that and get you a fuller response in the near future as we get more information on that. But we're pretty on top of that. On the Waits, my, my update is mainly that we will have a fuller update for you next week. We continue to meet with the Common Street people and the city's internal team every single day. And I've been, although I'm sort of on the outside looking in, incredibly impressed with the work that Common Street is doing. They're working with every single individual there. A number of people have been moved out successfully. A number of other people have a, a moving plan that they are in the process of implementing. Next week, I think Common Street will be here. We probably will do it in executive session because so much of it is personal, private information, because they're doing such a good job of tailoring their plans to every single individual and the services they need. We'll probably schedule, I'm guessing it'll take at least 30 minutes because they are doing incredibly detailed work with everybody, but we're making very, very good progress on that. And lastly, are we on, are we past yours? Are we on to city attorney?
I'm done, council president.
Councilmember Vogely.
Can I ask a follow-up question on the Waits?
Of course, you're a council member.
And that is, I was, I think we all were, got an email with condemnation letter that has been posted on Unit One. It's bright yellow. And so, and there is an RCW on that, et cetera, et cetera. And the people that are in Unit One are still there, so.
Yes. But we, we, both within the city and Common Street, are very focused on the two residents of Unit One. And without going into a lot of personal, private information that I don't want to divulge about their situation, we want to make sure that they're safe.
So I guess my point is, they are being helped and.
Very, very, very much so.
Very scary to get, oh, my God, condemned, just this unit.
They are being helped by, from, from all sides.
Okay, fantastic.
The unit is very unsafe.
And, thank you. And still, I guess I'm still, I was hoping for the, I can't remember what we're calling it right now. Jennifer, do you remember?
I know what, yeah. So we are still in the midst of drafting kind of a standard letter that, that we want to share with all of the residents at Waits, because there were some individuals who had been there for a long time but left real early. And we want to make sure that it's, there's really fair and standard information that, you know, kind of outlines what it, what this sort of support from the city means. It's really clear to a lot of folks that have engaged, so they, you know, have worked on like temporary moving processes, support for the belongings that they, they have at the Waits and that they might want to move, or maybe they want to keep there for a while while they figure out what their long-term step is. And so it's still, it's still getting finalized, and I think that'll definitely be part of the discussion that we hope to have with you all in more detail.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the last report that I have is, you may have seen that Johnson &amp; Johnson reached a settlement with the state of Washington in one of the several opioid cases. Washington State had decided not to participate in the multi-state settlement on the theory that they could get a better deal. And in fact, as it turned out, they did get a better deal. They have settled with Johnson &amp; Johnson for about 124 million dollars, and that amount will be split between the state and the many counties and cities within the state, including us. The allocation formula will be similar to the allocation formula in other settlements that we've reported on. I don't know what the numbers are yet, but when we do know what amount Everett will be receiving, which will be a non-negligible amount, I'll report that to you. That was very good news.
Thank you. It certainly is. I just have two comments. One is, my original plan for selecting our multi-facility financial committee was to that we would get our packets, and then, then you guys would submit four names, because that's what the council has, is four options. But being that it's 29 or 30, I, my thought is that we would raise that and ask for you to submit seven names, and that we would submit those names to Angie, and we would keep them for public disclosure, of course, and then tally. And if there's a tie, we might have another, another selection process. And then bring the top four votes to a council meeting. And the other point is that we have a retreat coming up, so I just want to make that announced for those who might be watching. There won't be room for, there won't be time for public comment, but they'll certainly be able to watch the discussion. So I'll look forward to that. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the first two consent items on the agenda. We'll save the third.
Councilmember Bader moves the first two consent items.
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion in a second. Clerk, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuey?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. And at this time, we'll have Councilmember Tuey recuse herself for consent item number three. Okay, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt a consent item number three.
Councilmember Bader so moves.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
They have a second, a motion in a second. Clerk, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes.
Council president, just wanted to say thank you to the committee that did all the work to bring this in front of us. So just acknowledge your work as well.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, now we'll move to our action item. Adopt a resolution approving the Everett Station Business District improvement area for the 2024 budget. Entertain a motion.
I will make that motion.
I will make the second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. At this time, will we get a presentation, or do we have questions before we take the vote?
Happy to take questions. This is a housekeeping item to approve the Everett, the Everett Station District BIA's annual budget. That's required in their establishing ordinance. That total budget amount is around 550,000. It's in the packet. Assessments will increase by 4.6%. That's the June to June CPI. That follows the ordinance, so.
Okay, questions, comments. Councilmember Tuey?
Yeah, I know Brock is here. I just have a quick, one question. Is there something that you're saving all the reserves for? Because that's a, that's a healthy amount for that size budget.
It is.
Press the button, please.
Oh, I get to go down there now?
No, no, sorry. Turn the mic on.
Okay, great. It is a healthy reserve. Again, my name is Brock Howell, Executive Director, Everett Station District Alliance. So this past year was our first year of the BIA, which is very exciting to finally provide services. We entered into the contract with the city in April, May, May. And so we started providing services, neighborhood services in June. The assessments for the entire year. And so we didn't incur as many of the expenses as we initially expected within the city's budget at the start of the year. It is fortunate for us because it is allowing us to deal with a couple of issues. First, it was our first year, and so it's the first year that we're collecting assessments and talking with property owners and making sure that they're paying. And there's five property owners that haven't paid their assessment yet. And so we cannot get paid for the months of November and December until those assessments come in. And so on the books, we've expended, we've done those expenses, but it allows us to have the cash flow necessary going into the next year. The second thing is that we expect that the program implementation for the neighborhood services, specifically the work that we're doing to make sure that the neighborhood is clean and safe, will be a little bit higher than expected. So having this a little bit extra reserve is going to allow us, over the next two to three years, be able to spread out that incurred costs. So that, that is how we're projecting to use that cash reserve moving forward.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay.
Thank you. Hearing on. Clerk, will you take the roll?
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuey?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. With no further business, we now adjourn.